Yeah.
Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, June 1st, 2022. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt, presiding, also present are counselors Kate McAllister, Deb Rule, Andy Groth, Jason Walker, and Justin Dick. Counsel Joe Spiro is absent this evening. Will now rise for the pledge of allegiance. Are there any announcements from council? All right. Any announcements from staff?
Quick announcement, Mr. Mayor, we are in the process of finalizing the issuance of a special event. A opening of the City Hall, Old City Hall Building downtown with the Music Conservatory this weekend. So there will be an associated street closure on Friday evening after 5 o'clock on Second Street between Second and Main and the alleyway. So people will still be able to get through the alleyway headed east and west, kind of behind Jeff Jones Square. So that closure will be from 5 o'clock to late in the evening on Friday night. And then they will also have some activities on Saturday and Sunday, but there will not be associated street closures. So we continue to move forward with processing a lot of special event permits. So that'll be this weekend's activity.
All right. Thank you much. Anything else? That's it. Okay. I have a proclamation to read this evening to recognize national gun violence awareness state, which is particularly fitting in the wake of the Uvalde massacre just days ago. Whereas every day, more than 110 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 200 who are shot and wounded. And on average, there are nearly 16,000 gun homicides every year. Whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. Whereas the state of Idaho has 278 gun deaths every year and the fourth highest rate of gun suicide deaths in the, in the US. Whereas cities across the nation, including in Sandpoint, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. Whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. Whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is a mayor's higher, highest responsibility. Whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with the local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. Whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic has continued to exacerbate gun violence after more than two years of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. Whereas in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 3rd, 2022, to recognize what would have been Hadia's 25th birthday, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Day, I'm sorry, National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and wear orange in tribute to Hadia, other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. Whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, a color they chose because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. Whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 3rd, the first Friday in June, to help raise awareness about gun violence. Whereas by wearing orange on June 3rd, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to help keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now, now therefore be it resolved that I Shelby Ronstadt, Mayor of Sandpoint, Idaho, hereby declare June 3rd, 2022 to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Sandpoint. And I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Alice Armbari. Present this to you. If you want to get a photo or fix up your guts. Okay. Next is the public forum portion of the meeting, which gives the public the opportunity to address the council and myself on issues, either on the consent calendar, on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Those here in chambers who wish to speak will need to complete a signup form, which is available by the front door on the table. And please hand it to clerk up front here. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak, you will need to raise your hand. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual, individual organization or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to council or to staff and do not approach the dais. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Madam Clerk, has anyone indicated that they would like to speak during the public forum this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Janine Shepherd.
Okay.
Mayor, council members just wanted to come and give a blessing for your meeting and over your lives. So if you would pray with me. Lord, we come before you tonight and we pray for the mayor and the council members. We ask that you give them clarity of mind and vision. We ask for wisdom from heaven in the decisions they make tonight. Please bless this city and bring revival to our land. If any of the elected officials here are plagued with sickness or disease, we pray that you would heal them completely from head to toe in Jesus's name. Show your glory through their lives. We ask that you make our lives look like Jesus and that we would demonstrate the fruits of the Spirit in our lives. Help us seek after you, Lord, and as we gaze upon you, transform us. For those who don't know you, we pray that you reveal yourself to them in tangible ways. Open their eyes to see your activity in their lives. Help them to see that you are what is missing in their lives. For those who know you, we pray for a deepening relationship with you. Give us a hunger for you and your word. Please, Lord, come and fill this place in Jesus's name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Madam Clerk.
No one else has signed up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and we have no one online wishes to speak. Please, the public forum portion meeting this evening will now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $161,556.36 for regular payables. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the calendar? Seeing none of it entertaining, motion that the consent column be approved?
No moved.
Second.
They moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Groth.
Yes.
Counselor Sprow. Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor McAllister. Yes. Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Consent calendars approved. The first item under old business this evening is an update from Police Chief Corey Coon on the School Resource Officer Program and School Safety. Thank you, Corey. In advance.
I've done something different that I don't think I've done since I've been the chief, and I actually wrote stuff down today. So 10 years, this is to keep me on topic. So I'm going to read this and I'll take any questions. The concern about school safety this past week has been all over minds. The recent high-profile school shooting has captured the attention of the public and has resulted in a variety of reactions from individuals, government agencies, school administrators, and even law enforcement officers in the response. The question I've been asked this past week is what is the Sandpoint Police Department doing to protect our students in our schools? First off, school safety is not an individual task, but a team effort, which should be include, which includes, but should not be limited to some of the following members. Our local government agencies, our school board members, our county commissioners, the individual schools and their administrators, our local law enforcement agencies, first responders, the public and mental health. One way the city of Sandpoint, the Lake Pontcharrae School District, has chosen to address some of the issues or safety concerns in the past is by adding an additional school resource officer to our program, increasing it to two. We know that some of the advantages of having our school resource officers in our schools is they are a deterrent for potential misbehavior or delinquent activities. Our school resource officers are dedicated to the schools and available for responding to all emergencies within their schools. And they're equipped with the tools they need to do their jobs. Our school resource officers participate within the schools to help evaluate risk, not risk threats, not only to the students themselves, but also to the facilities. Our school resource officers have increased and improved our relationship with our students within the schools. The plus to that is that ability to communicate with them at a greater level than we've ever seen before. Our students feel comfortable in speaking with them about issues or activities that are going on in their personal life or at their home life. The, the sheer appearance sometimes is it can make us feel safe and secure in our schools. While schools can implement safety measures on their own, the experience has taught me over the years that it's not an individual act that takes place from strictly the school. I went back today and just kind of listed some of the, the things that we've done over the past few years to help with our school's safety. So I'm just going to list these out. The police department, city of Sandpoint, has partnered with the, the school district on a multidisciplinary team that went around and we evaluated all of our schools for areas that needed to be improved. From that, the school district has taken an active approach to fixing some of those issues. The schools added additional cameras, upgraded qualities, improved locking mechanisms. The school district has improved communications with parents, students, and staff. Nowadays, you can get that via text, email, phone call, a variety of ways. Schools added additional fencing in some of their areas. We perform fire drills. On top of that, we perform safety holds for the threats that are outside of the building. We perform lockdown drills for the threats are inside of the building. We put placards in all of our classroom to explain to the students and staff and visitors what those, those drills are and what their responsibilities are during those events. At the police department side, we've increased our training in our schools so we become more familiar with our buildings. Every summer, you'll see us in and out of the schools as a team. We invite other agencies to participate when we do those. We've even hosted regional events in that, for that active shooter training. We've worked with historically with our schools and reviewing their policies and procedures. Recently, because of the, the Texas shooting, our schools have went back and started to reinforce the single point of entry. They've encouraged their staff to stop propping open doors to reinforce it. I know yesterday I was walking around with, at the high school. Their principal was out double checking doors, re-locking doors and reinforcing those activities. Some of our schools have went to a, a complete lockdown where the doors are locked. One of the administrators will meet them at the front door to let them in as a safety check. One of the things that we've started again this week is pulling some of those old policies and procedures out and reviewing them. Because of COVID, it's probably been a couple of years since we've looked at them. So now is a, a great time to spend the summer and redo that. I've spent quite a bit of time on the phone with our superintendent, Tom Albertson. He's explained some of the, some of the things that he expects in his term that he has left. They've got staff coming in, they're reevaluating some of their locking mechanisms for their front door in, in ways they can improve that. So at their school board next week, I'm assuming he'll, he'll give that presentation. So I won't take any of his thunder away from him. One of the things that's hard is that we can look at statistics and then there's a lot of them out there. We can, we can project times and days, a situation like that may hap, may happen in our community. But the reality it really comes down to is all we can do is be ready for when it happens. I think that's the biggest point that I want to make today is that the city of Sandpoint, the police officers in this agency, and I'm going to speak on behalf of the other ones, the Pontcharrae Police Department, Bonner County Sheriff's Department, Idaho State Police, Fish and Game. If there's an issue that takes place in our community, whether it's in our school, in Walmart, down at the beach, each and every one of those guys will not hesitate to put their life on the line to save our students, our guests, or us. That is it. I will stand for any questions.
Thanks, Corey. Any questions for the chief?
I don't have any questions. I've got a statement.
Perfect.
First, it's, thank you. So I'm like, that last little bit kind of got me. So I'm going to take a, take a beat. So with what I do for a living, I'm up and down division. And so I see those schools and I see those kids walking, coming, going, all the stuff. I'm in and out of those schools pretty frequently when I had kids in and now with, with the work that I do. The, the deterrent of having a police officer's vehicle in front as well as a police officer inside absolutely is a deterrent. Those police officers that are in those schools do more than just deter. They're making connections with every single one of those kids that is brave enough to be able to say some words. I understand and empathize with communities across the nation that are wrestling with this. It's not that we're not wrestling with this. You, your staff, other community, other Lake Pontcharrae School District, they have already prepared to be ready to build in resilience. We're not, so what I mean by that is this is a thank you for doing everything that you've done up till this point. Your commitment to doing more and always reviewing and giving the best to our kids and their educators and us as a community. So there are no questions in that. But it's a, it's a huge thank you to you and to our public to understand that although they are now paying attention, you have been paying attention for a very long time and you are ready and you and your people will go.
Thank you. You, counselor. Thank you, chief. Appreciate that. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this issue? Madam Clerk.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. The next item under old business is a proposed license agreement with Pontcharrae Peddlers for the construction, maintenance, and preservation of a selected aspects of the trail, trails that lie on the city-owned property within the Little Sand Creek watershed. I will now yield the floor to Parks and Planning, Parks Planning and Development Manager Maeve Nevins Lauttar for a presentation and to answer any questions that you may have.
And Mr. Mayor, I, as the executive director of that organization, will be stepping down from the dais for this part of the meeting.
Thank you. We'll come get you when it's time. Take it away, Maeve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Today we have a very exciting license agreement. This is a renewal for Pontcharrae Peddlers. They have had an active agreement for the use of the watershed and the city portions or property owned in the watershed since 2015. And as you know, they are a local trail advocacy group. They maintain the multi-use trails. Some of them are purpose-built for mountain biking, but for the most part, they are all multi-use and intended to be that way. They currently have an active construction project under, underway, and they're finishing up the phase, the first phase of the lower basin expansion. There is a resolution in front of you. We have revised and updated this license agreement to include a little bit more robust language underneath the maintenance portion. I've been working close with Pontcharrae Peddlers on a tiered system where essentially they present a trail maintenance plan annually and it's based on a prioritization criteria that the Forest Service has established. So the highest priority items would be something that they would be focusing on. And then there's three tiers to that. And this, while this agreement is only in its first year and this agreement is only for one year, as we develop our recreation master plan that I'm going to talk about briefly next. As we develop that plan, that plan will come in simultaneously with the renewal of this agreement in the future. So we will actually go into a, a brand new agreement once we have this plan and we'll be taking those recommendations from the master plan into account with the new license. So I don't want to call this anything more than a bridge to get us to the completion of the recreation master plan. It is actually quite robust, especially in the language under the maintenance. So the new revisions, the highlights are that POP has submitted a, an overarching trail maintenance plan, and that's really high level. Again, it's sort of their high priorities and what they intend to work on. And then as individual projects pop up or areas of concern pop up, then the second tier comes in, and this is a more hands-on, boots-on-the-ground type of a review where it involves an inspection of the area. So for example, if a blade, a bridge was blown out during the summer, then they have to develop a trail inspection report. It triggers myself or another staff member to go and inspect it with them. And then they propose a solution and we talk about the right solution for that time. In this case, we currently do have a situation where we have been reviewing the, the, I'm going to call the historical downhill trail. It is not currently part of what the Pontcharrae Peddlers is actively taking care of. So we have recently, as recent as just a few days ago, we've done a walkthrough. We've identified all existing hazards and we have proposed a patient plan. So that's an example for how that system will work. I have been working hand in hand with our legal team and have reviewed everything. And I think we have a, a strong agreement in front of you today. So the resolution file is to request your approval for this license agreement. And then I will get into the recreation master plan.
Great. I just have a question about the downhill. So thi, this downhill proposed, this is different than the downhill that has historically existed?
No, actually, Mayor, they are, it's the same trail. And what you're looking at on the screen here is actually what is there right now? The black trail with the diamond, that is the existing downhill trail. The green squiggly line off, I guess it's my right, your left, the green line. That is the, the trail that starts at Switchback Two, which is where the trailhead is and goes all the way up to. It connects close to the roundabout and ties back into that downhill. So they are utilizing some existing portions of that downhill trail and re, reworking it so that it is used for two-way traffic and multi-use. So they've really cleaned up segments of that, but they are not actively working on the existing downhill trail. The main reason is that that would require potentially a reroute. We will be looking at that in the future and I'm going to get into how we're going to look at that when I talk about next steps and the update for the recreation master plan. But essentially, we will be looking at all the trails out there and coming up with a proposal. So for now, they're just looking at high areas of concern, higher areas of risk and intermediate solutions that can reduce the risk and still make it usable.
Okay. So is the downhill, is the black trail being used today?
Yes, it is.
Because I was under the impression, great to have Jason here, that that hit was basically the majority of that trail was abandoned because it had a number of problems with runoff, erosion, safety issues, et cetera. So, but it's still active.
Yes.
And in those.
And it currently has snow on it near the top. So it's not too active in the level of the rider, I would argue, or more advanced. It doesn't, it's not particularly welcoming. To reduce the risk, POP has signed it and delineated it that it's separate from the lower basin trail systems. It's not being maintained. There's, there's signage throughout, which is one technique of reducing risk. And that is something that I have worked with Andy on as a recommended. It's a, it's a mediation tool, I would say. But yes, it does get used. I would say it's more for, by the people that know about it. It's not necessarily advertised as being used. But it certainly exists as well as other social trails. I would call it a social trail, a historical trail. It's, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
If I might, because of my involvement, I've walked all these trails. And so I would consider that kind of a user-created trail. It wasn't a trail that POP ever created.
Right.
They, there were certain parts that they tried to manage and fix. But that was always further down the plan to make a proper trail that wouldn't have the hazards. But it kind of ended up in their bucket because they decided to take over the watershed. So I think that that, the, and the new green trail is to get uphill travel off some of the faster downhill and to also make it, change the grade on that trail so that it is a more appropriate and usable uphill, whether you're walking, running, or riding uphill without an electric bike, shall we say. So just to clarify that a little bit, so.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I recall in the 2014, 2015 agreement, with, with the original agreement, that there was, the, the spirit of it was such that you're absolutely right. The, the black trail was a user-created trail far, far preceding, you know, POP's responsibility with this or the city's involvement in this whatsoever. But, but the spirit of that agreement was to abandon the black trail with the hopes that we would someday have a replacement downhill trail, but recognizing that that trail was just very poorly constructed. And so it, it sounds like we, maybe we veered a little bit away from that, from the spirit of that in practice.
Well, historically, I was here before Maeve, so there were parts that were improved on that trail to reduce the hazards and stuff. There were, people were accessing from the road, riding down the road from spit-out area at turn four and dumping back off into another area. So the peddlers put a lot of effort into trying to cordon that off with large boulders and trees. And, but when you have a user-created trail until you can develop a trail that is better, that they choose to ride instead, you're just kind of banging your head on the wall. So with the minimal funds that the peddlers had previous to having an executive director come on, I think that they did the best they could to make parts of it safer. And then with a long-term vision of creating a real trail that is not a safety hazard, hazard, but is appropriate and fun for that high-level rider so that they don't go off trail and start to create their own trails.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So my question is about liability. So on the social trails, you knew I was going to ask this. So on the social trails, do we still assume liability if somebody goes and hurts themselves? I mean, we can say they're not sanctioned and people shouldn't go there. But if somebody hurts themselves, then where does that leave us?
The city has immunity from liability under recreational use statute. So if somebody, someone is using a city property, whether it be within a watershed or one of our parks or, or whatever, unless the city has immunity from liability for that recreational use, unless we would charge a fee for, for use. And in this instance, we don't. So our immunity would run to any activities there, as long as we don't create some, you know, type of ultra-hazardous condition or something like that. And I think Maeve has addressed that along, along with Pontcharrae Peddlers to try to minimize some of the areas with on that, within that Black Diamond Trail that they would consider to be probably not the safest spots. She has some pictures here to show you those. And they're going to do, they're going to do that as part of their maintenance plan within the, within the watershed.
Excellent. We're just a very litigious society, so we don't need another lawsuit. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, I, I had a question about one of the items in the agreement. Should I ask that now or are you going to go further through the items in the agreements?
I was not planning to, but I certainly can.
I didn't know when that was appropriate. I didn't want to interrupt your other part of your presentation.
No, I was intending to present on the watershed project.
Okay.
But I can, let me bring this up. Do you know the item?
I believe it was 14.
Specific obligations of POP?
And there was, in, in the item, just from what I remember off the top of my head and, and the notes that I made, it discusses financial, that POP is fully financial and there would be no funds contributed from the city for maintenance, et cetera, so on and so forth. Except that I know that we put money in our budget a number of years now for specifically to do that. And so now there's a piece in here that says we're not doing that. So I did have a conversation with the executive director and he explained a little bit about some things, but I wanted to hear from you exactly, for you to clarify what is going on with that.
All right. Thank you very much for your question. Counselor Rule, the question that you're specifically referencing is item fourteen, and you are correct. We did mention in here that we are not contributing funding for maintenance. This agreement is separate from the ma- from the funding string and from the pot that is going towards maintenance of the watershed. This is a license agreement for using the land. So it's essentially, it's like a lease agreement. And so my understanding, and I might actually call Cheryl Hughes up to explain it a little bit better, we decided to separate the two because that funding can change. And if we were to identify it in here, my understanding is that it, this is one agreement that's going to be a separate agreement. And so you will see that through, through and through, where we'll be, that funding pot will ebb and flow, I guess is what I would say. And here Cheryl to clarify a little bit more of why we separated.
So it's, it's, it is separate. We are not, the money the city is giving to POP is completely separate from this agreement and needs to be treated as a separate agreement. And there will be another agreement for the money that is given to POP. What it's for, what are the expectations, that will be identified in that agreement.
Okay, it was just a little confusing because it says not for maintenance, and that was how it went into the budget and-
Yes, so that'll be like just completely separate. And what is the city's obligations for those funds? What is POP's expectations for those funds? But it is just completely separate than the license agreement for POP to utilize the trail.
Okay, and so we'll probably be seeing some, some sort of agreement before final budget then, I would assume?
I don't know the timeline of that agreement, but you'll be seeing it soon, I'm sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure that's next on the list to work on.
Well, budgets, we're still a month. Let's not think about budget yet. I know you guys all are, but, okay, thank you. Okay.
Hopefully that clarifies.
Yeah, that helps clarify. It was just something that, to me, was like, that, yeah, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Okay. Any other questions? And would you like to address the resolution first, or do you want to share my other?
Yeah, please continue with your presentation.
I think it might help. So going back to the watershed recreation management plan, as you know, that was highlighted in the watershed management plan as appendix, as an appendix item. And it was on a little bit of delay until we could get our, our, get my position filled and then get everything figured out. And so I've been, as you know, I applied for the National Park Service Rivers, Trails and Conservation Technical Assistance Grant. We were awarded that. And now I have kicked off the project. So part of kicking off the project and figuring out what we're going to do and how we're going to get this Recreation Master Plan done, I've been doing, conducting site visits. So what you see on the screen are some of the examples of some of the issues that we're dealing with. These pictures do come from the social downhill trail, if you will. And this is an example of existing recreation trail management risk issues that we deal with. So we are dealing with historical trails, not just mountain biking, but also for other recreation users. You know, there's ATVs in the winter, there's snowmobiles up there. We're dealing with a lot of different types of recreation that we are seeing out there. There's hunting, there's horseback riding, there's berry picking, et cetera, et cetera. We are dealing with access and trailheads and pull-offs along Switzer Mountain Road. A lot of the shuttling incidents, ITV has certainly made it clear that they do not want people shuttling off the side of the road. They don't want berry pickers parking all over and congesting ta- traffic. So we're trying to balance that. I mentioned the unpermitted recreation activities and shuttling. We are trying to balance tourism and economic, you know, stimulants from recreation. It is a substantial economic driver, particularly in, in the Rocky Mountain region and the northern area. And we're balancing that with risk. There's a considerable amount of inhabitants on city property, but as well as throughout the entire watershed. Just a reminder that the city owns about 5,000 acres of the 8,000 approximate acres of the total watershed. So we are the majority landowner, but we are not the only landowners up there. We're dealing with erosion, drainage, fire risk, tree health, forest management. Clean water protection, of course, is number one of the priorities for the watershed. And how, how do I, you know, or we as a community balance the expectations of the recreation community at, at the same time as all of these other priorities? So these are all things that are circulating in, in my planning brain. And through that, I've evolved to where are we headed with this recreation watershed, Recreation Watershed Management Plan? So it's, this is sort of the what, why, and how. We are currently assessing the conditions and existing agreements. I'm securing funding and I've basically been asking for help from the identified, previously identified stakeholders. So we have two things happening here. The immediate actions are managing existing agreements, identifying and mitigating risks. So that was the first thing that needed to happen with POP. POP, the Ponderay Peddlers are the only active managed user group up there. So I needed to essentially review their agreement and basically see what we can do to mitigate that simultaneously, working under an existing construction project that was approved pre- prior to me coming on board. So I've also implemented an inspection process and construction procedures for that. And so we've, I've been working with that, making sure that they're compliant with all of their permits, making sure that they're following through on everything that they agreed to do. So that has been ongoing, so essentially eyes in the field. And, you know, I started that last fall. I, I implemented the first round of riding mountain biking inspections. So we started that last fall because I am a rider, there's different risk management to look at and just things that, that I can add to that, the inspection process through that. So that's ongoing. And then this summer, as I said, we were able to, I got some of my help. And so I was able to secure that technical assistance grant. What that means essentially is I have doubled my capacity. I have a clone of myself. I've been assigned a landscape architect-trained planner for, from the National Park Service. And she has the same skill set as, as I do. And she will be coming here visiting entirely as part of their pot of money. So the National Park Service, Rivers, Trails and Conservation pays for her to come here to help me. We've been having weekly calls. We just had one a few hours ago today where we met with Salt Lake City Watershed Management there and the deputy director of their utilities. So we've been already doing our research. That's one of the first steps and examining precedents and talking to all of her partners throughout the US. Second to that, we are in the scoping process, the preliminary process of hiring the International Mountain Bike Association. They are sort of the leaders in, leaders in trail assessments. They have a branch called Trail Solutions. They offer assessments of trails, existing trails, proposed trails, and they also do build trails. And so they have been working for decades on the policy side of mountain biking and recreation. And we are going, we are about to enter into agreement. We just received word that we have a matching grant donation from Kinnick Sioux Land Trust, POP, Ponderay Peddlers, and the Sandpoint Nordic Club have all contributed $9,000 in match towards the city's budget. I currently have 25,000 available in my park and recreation budget allotted for planning efforts, combined with the $10,000 in addition that we are contributing towards this year's trail maintenance, in addition to another $9,000 in the match from, from our partners over at KLT. We will be using a portion of that for this upcoming trail assessment to look at existing mountain bike trails, historical ones, and potential new ones, including, but not limited to mountain biking, but social trails, multi-use. We're going to be looking at as mu- much of the trails that we possibly can with that funding. And we're currently in the proposal scoping stage right now, so I'm not, it's not 100%, but we're, we're getting close. We're negotiating right now. We are currently establishing our stakeholder slash technical advisory committee. And that is coming out of the master plan that was already done and then reconnecting with all of those people, securing relationships and checking in on availability. Because as we enter into summer, not many people want to be in meetings, so I'm trying to schedule some things. In addition, I'm working with Jennifer closely on a public outreach plan. And we will, of course, be working with the community and tend to reach out to local indigenous tribes, particularly the Kalispel tribe. We will be looking at this from a cultural, from a wildlife biological perspective. We're going to put all hats into this. We get one chance at, at doing this right. I feel like this is our, our source for clean water. It's important to do this to the best of our ability. So we're doing all of that, and when I say we, I mean my team. And this is the planning team. This is who we're looking at here. So you have me, my partner in crime, Mr. Greg Lanning, our director. He is considered the project director on this particular project. Of course, Jennifer is a part of it. Our technical experts are Betsy Bryan with the National Park Service. Mike Ripiak is the lead, the director of Trail Solutions from International Mountain Bike Association. He has a background, he is in landscape architecture. And then if we continue to need further professional services, we will, we do have funding allocated. I have budget reserved for that as well. We have been in contact with the BLM, the Bureau of Land Management. I understand they have a new director as well for the state and her number-one initiative. What I've been told is recreation. And so I'm just kind of reigniting the historical partners at this point and bringing them in. And then you will hear more on the planning efforts and the outreach as we go forward. So that's where we are with everything. This is a preliminary timeline. So basically right now, you know, over the winter, you heard me kind of ramping up, pulling the pieces together. We are now in June to early summer. We're in the planning kickoff stage. So we're initiating planning, kicking off with some meetings and some preliminary implementation framework is being established. It will be structured, it will be transparent. I will have everything on the web and I'll be, you know, broadcasting this as it gets developed. As we enter into the planning process, I mentioned the assessments, the evaluation phase, looking at what was already done, creating a baseline analysis for things like E. coli, looking at the water, seeing how the dogs impact the watershed, all of that stuff. Looking at the noxious weeds, the forest health, all of those things will come into play. You can anticipate a draft plan starting to come to realization, I would imagine, early, early winter, probably around December, Christmas time. And I anticipate presenting, you know, sort of the semifinal, if not the final version at the latest in June of 2023. And then that will allow us plenty of time to, if we need to have more meetings after that. So that's my, my essential overview, high level. Yeah, with that, I'll turn it over for any questions.
Great, thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, may I? I have no questions, but I have been waiting so long to have somebody like you here who is putting all the pieces together. I'm excited for you. It seems like you're very excited about this piece of your job right now, and I'm glad that we're getting an opportunity to do it properly. And I've, myself have always been a bike advocate, but I also am very aware of taking care of that water and taking care of that watershed and, and not being everywhere in it, but making places good for people to stay there and then protecting other parts of it so it can just be a natural environment. So look forward to this as it moves on. So, great job. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I would like to recognize you also. We are lucky and fortunate to have someone with your passion and your expertise. I think that we've needed that as well. I'd like to recognize POP. These are the numbers that were given to us in our packet, but there's 400. The community needs to understand that this is 400-plus volunteer hours that contributes almost to $12,000 this year and almost $84,000 year-to-date. That, which, you know, since we're throwing money around and we're talking about this and that, the heart and the passion and the resiliency of volunteers for a passion project like this is priceless. 400 hours and the organization that it takes to get that many people together to do that. It, it is again, one of the reasons why we love living in this community. So POP, thank you very much.
Oh, well said, council persons, both of you. And thank you, Maeve. Appreciate your service. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thanks again, Maeve. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter? Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. The, oh, let's see, we got one more, the last item under Old Business. Oh, I'm sorry, let's, uh, let's take a vote on this, shall we? I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for watershed license agreement with Ponderay Peddlers. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? It'll be a roll call vote.
Counselor Groth?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Absolutely, yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Motion passes. The last item under Old Business this evening is an update from Infrastructure Development Services Manager, Director, sorry, Amanda Wilson, on the Preliminary Capital Investment Plan and Funding Strategies to, related to street and sidewalk improvements throughout the city over the next five years. Amanda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Share my screen. Okay, so this will be an update regarding our multimodal projects, specifically Preliminary Capital Investment Plan as well as a funding strategy for the future. I'm going to begin the presentation and then Jennifer's going to assist with some elements of it as well. So diving right in, planning for transportation. You're all familiar with the recently adopted multimodal transportation plan. Was adopted in May of 2021. And the plan specifically and very intentionally used the word multimodal as we have carried forward here. And that is because it really includes all modes of transportation. It's intended for pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, watercraft, transit riders, freight transporters, and really all users of our system. So we're not just talking about streets, we're not just talking about sidewalks, it's the system collectively. And this story, just so you're aware, will be shared on our Facebook as well as on our website by tomorrow. So you'll be able to take a deeper dive into it as well as the public. Within that plan, we have included a 20-year, sorry, I'll scroll back up, a 20-year capital investment plan. So that is our best tool going forward for the future as we look at short-term, midterm, and long-term needs within our community for all of those various elements that I just mentioned. One key component of the infrastructure investment is around pavement assessment. So the multimodal plan that was adopted included by appendix, a pavement management analysis report. You've all heard of this. We reviewed it in detail at previous council meetings. But in a nutshell, we used a database decision-making tool, which was this van as displayed here, to do an electronic assessment of all of our pavement surfaces throughout town. And it looked at a variety of factors from pavement cracking to texturing, rutting, roughness, crossfall, the crown grade, the curvature, as well as subsurface distress. So those things that we can't see, including deflection of the surface. And that was specifically done on our terials as well as our collectors. So the report directly informs which streets we go about maintaining. We get that question a lot from the public, as I'm sure you do as well. How are you prioritizing this street over that street? And the answer is it's a combination of factors, but this is primarily where we start, and that's that pavement assessment. The reason that we did it using this van is because we want to- The reason that we did it using this van is because we wanted to make sure it wasn't subjective, right? So this is strictly based upon lasers that are telling us what a pavement condition index is based upon national standards. That report at a glance came to fruition again in 2020, so it is a couple of years old at this point. But it noted fifty-one centerline miles of city maintained streets that are asphalt and concrete. It also provided a condition index, as I mentioned just recently, and that is a score that's assigned from one to one hundred. And it says on a scale of one to one hundred, how good are our streets, a hundred being excellent, zero being very poor. So Sam Point's average condition index is sixty-one, and that is within the national average. However, our backlog, which are those streets that are very poor or considered poor, which is a index of zero to forty, is at twenty-one percent to date, so twenty-one percent of our streets are either poor or very poor. And that's nearly double the national average, we would typically see in a healthy system a ten percent backlog on our streets. So what does that really mean? We've historically budgeted two hundred and fifty on average per year to invest in our pavement specifically. If we were to continue investing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, the network would continue to deteriorate, obviously, and we would end up with a much higher failure rate. And so I really appreciate the report, and I use this quote directly from it, noting that our roadways, they form an economic backbone of our community, and therefore they are an investment to be maintained. So as a result of that statement, the report concluded that if we just want to keep our current backlog, if we're going to accept that twenty percent of a backlog is what we want for the future, we need to take two hundred and fifty thousand and increase that to one million. So backlog, again, remember that's very poor or poor. The analogy that I use is similar to a house, and if you're going to decide, I want to repair this house or I'm going to tear this house down and rebuild it, what we're talking about are those houses, if you will, that we can still repair. They haven't gone over the edge where they're not repairable. That's a really important point, because our residents often complain about the streets that are beyond repair. They're often complaining about the streets that we should be tearing down and rebuilding, but this pavement assessment report doesn't prioritize those streets. And so ultimately, we recognize a staff, that's probably not a solid plan to just focus on those streets that are at the tipping point, but also to focus and find some balance between those that we need to repair and those that we need to just replace so that people have drivable streets. We have another item on our agenda this evening for Great Northern. That would be an example of a street that does not currently rise to the level of this report's priority list based upon funding, but we know it's not, portions of it are not drivable and it's not acceptable to not repair it. So we've tried to provide a balance in that as we move forward. When City Council adopted the multimodal transportation plan, it plugged as a recommended investment, the million dollars per year. We're going to look on a larger scale, this graphic was included in that pavement assessment and it's trying to place a value on our system. So our roadways include a variety of components, as I mentioned earlier, from the pavement to the substrate and base, the sidewalks, the ramps. And all of that, the value of our system in 2020 was estimated at about eighty-six million dollars. When you add sewer and water utilities and additional stormwater infrastructure, beyond just that provided by curbs, we get into the billions. So for us to go forward and replace all of our streets and have streets that serve everyone equally when it comes to a condition perspective, we simply don't have the funds at that magnitude. Therefore, there's obviously a need to prioritize, which is really what this entire presentation is about, what is our investment plan? Where do we want to prioritize and which projects are included in that preliminary list? So before we get to the future, we're going to talk a little bit about the past. The city's historical investments in streets, sidewalks and pathways is represented before you. So they've been broken out into two categories. The one on the left, the graphic on the left is representing what we call routine investments, and the one on the right is representing routine plus major. So I'll focus and focus on the one on the left and then I'll explain what I mean by major. So routine are broken down into streets and pet and bike. So the left graphic is trying to show over the last ten years, sort of that balance between how much we've invested from a pavement perspective compared to our pet and bike facilities, and you can see it's, it's varied over time. A lot of that's varied based upon funding mechanisms. The graphic on the right is showing the total capital investment in those systems. So routine being what we would typically do, that's under a million and or like a single year project. So recently we replaced the pavement on Ella, that was a substantial project, it was over four hundred thousand dollars, we got it done in a year. So that doesn't fit into that major category, you're going to find that project on the left graphic there. Versus downtown revitalization, Schweitzer Roundabout, Schweitzer Bridge, those are multi-year, multi-million dollar projects. So that's how the two are represented there. Again, with the graphic on the right, you'll see we've kind of ebbed and flowed over the years when it comes to how much we're investing in the systems. And the major being largely supported by grant dollars. I'll pause there for any questions.
I have a quick one, that one point oh three million, that's to maintain twenty percent?
Yes.
So we have to quadruple our spending to maintain the terrible roads that we have? If we want to reduce that to the national average of ten percent, do you have an estimate of what that would cost?
Approximately two million.
So eightfold increase in street spending?
Yes.
Great. Thanks.
So multimodal capital investments, in some, in, in good news, this recent fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-one, as well as last fall, we completed some fairly substantial projects, I just wanted to remind council and the public of those projects. We completed Spruce Street in front of Farm and Stidwell, was about fifteen hundred linear feet west of Division. We also designed and constructed an emergency repair, sorry, that's item number three there, along North Boyer Road in front of the Bonner County Fairgrounds. Pavement as well as the emergency pair, which was stabilizing the slope, and that's item number two there. Projects that are currently underway, we have the design overlay and widening of Ontario Street. This has been a project that's been brought up multiple times by the community. It doesn't rise to the level of our pavement condition assessment that says we need to prioritize it in the next five years. However, we recognize from a safety perspective and an increase in growth, that is a priority within the community. So coming before you, at your next city council meeting will be a request to enter into an inter-agency agreement with the city of Dover to piggyback on a construction project that they currently have underway to widen Ontario as well as replace that pavement, so we're hopeful that that will move forward. But the design is currently underway for that project. We also, this evening, have Great Northern Road, assuming and hopefully that'll be approved this evening, it will be completed in July of this year. We're also intending this month to bring forward a request to award a contract for Main Street to repave that section between Florence and Ruth Avenue. That's anticipated to be completed by August or sooner. And then we have multiple design projects underway this fiscal year to position us for next fiscal year so that we're getting ahead of the game and able to actually solicit bids earlier in the spring than even this year. And that includes portions of Ruth, Hickory, Jefferson, as well as Cedar Street. This one will ring true to many, I know, so west of Division between Lincoln and Division, that section of roadway, that's a pretty substantial project. And we'll talk a little bit about that at the end of the presentation as well. And I will hand it over to Jennifer for the funding strategies.
As Amanda addressed and we've talked about with adoption of the multimodal transportation plan, we've got multiple funding strategies and it really becomes a pretty complex formula as we look at trying to put together funding for street projects and for major capital projects. Of course, we use property taxes to fund street projects to a significant portion, that two hundred and fifty thousand that was historically funded. Predominantly that's coming from general fund property taxes. And a reminder to council that council made a commitment back in 2021 with the adoption of the multimodal plan to commit to consistency of investment, particularly in pavement maintenance and locally funded projects, both for planning purposes, for staff as we look out at multi-year plans, but as well as creating some amount of predictability for the community relative to what our investment would be. So moving from that historic kind of up and down, you can see even with local dollars invested in projects to try to get consistency. Staff were, council had directed staff and administration, really to go back home funding sources, look at, again through the budget, how we could build a larger investment from that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment, historic investment and what was an amount we could maintain moving forward. So beginning in 2021, again, when you go back and look at that graph, you'll see that the investment has been increased to a half a million dollar investment. Again, that's a long way from the one point oh three needed to maintain our current condition, but it was doubling of what the annual historic investment was in the streets. So again, we have plugged that into the 2023 budget as we're, we're starting to work on that now and it will be coming to council here next month. So a note about property taxes and the general fund is that investments in streets, it's a, it's a fine balance that we're making because we're trying to address the streets issues, but it's general fund, which is our support for public safety services, for example. So police and fire are supported by general fund. Our parks are predominantly supported by the general fund and then just general city services. So administration, planning and building, to a good extent, general fund is, is funding those services as well. So when we're balancing those infrastructure investments, we're balancing those with services that are provided to the community across the city as a whole. We do have impact fees that are collected on new development, those are associated with transportation projects that, that are part of the capital improvement plan and that is development paying its proportionate share of those particular projects. We're currently in rate studies and that will be coming to council next week in a workshop for utility funds, but we will be going into a full rate study on our impact fees as well. The challenge is development, so relative to impact fees and their contribution towards large projects is the impact fees and development, we've historically grown at a rate of about one and a half percent per year. So what comes in in development fees, and again, those are funding the really large, multi-year, over a million dollar capital projects. It becomes a small drop in the bucket to really funding those projects. So it's not a pavement maintenance program and that is not eligible for impact fees, that is large capital projects. So this kind of comes out of the equation for, again, that backlog that we have on maintenance programs, pavement maintenance programs needed. With sidewalks, a reminder that council had adopted updates to our code and changes relative to sidewalks and adopted an in-lu fee option for sidewalks so that we could partner investments with the city doing a set aside of investment from, again, local general fund dollars, property tax dollars and leveraging that, again, with development dollars to get us further rather than the kind of patchwork system we had with sidewalks throughout the community, looking at constructing a block at a time instead of a lot at a time. And a lot not being a lot, a lot being a lot of lots all over the city that aren't connected to anything else. As we discussed with the multimodal plan, we're highly reliant on grants for streets projects, that's consistent with all communities across the country. So for particularly for our large capital projects, we're reliant on grants. Our challenge again for those pavement maintenance programs, that annual investments that's needed to upkeep our streets, grants typically are not funding those kinds of projects. They are, they will fund some of our rebuilds when we have allowed a street to fail and we're rebuilding something and have an argument to be made by that. They will fund large new capital projects such as the proposed Baldi extension that's in our, our capital plan, but that pavement maintenance, that routine maintenance, grants don't really come in and play a part in that. Occasionally we'll see, because of the backlog of infrastructure projects, we will see the state maybe do one-time funding and we've seen that in recent years for pavement maintenance programs, but that's highly unusual and not a source of funding that we can look at for that pavement maintenance program. Local option tax is another option, so specifically our local option tax, and we do have one in place currently and that is what we call our bed tax or the lodging tax, so that's a voter-approved tax. And dependent on revenues and visitor impacted service fees, needs, we do have the ability to leverage local option tax that is collected on lodging to go for streets and sidewalks as well. Our priorities historically with those funds have been funding particularly public safety services that are impacted by the influx of visitors over the summer. So for example, we've used those, those dollars to add another police officer to our police force when we entered into that contract with Cootney, City of Cootney and with Lake Pondray School District to add another school resource officer, a few years back, we fund that project with the school resource officer funding coming from the school district, City of Cootney funding, and then in the summertime, when we have the uptick in visitors coming in, we use the local option tax dollars for that additional officer that we have then for the community in the summer to respond to increasing police calls. We also fund park services, one thing the community may not realize, and I think we've seen this to some extent, our garbage pickup actually down at City Beach and in our parks has more than doubled over the last couple of years. Our costs associated with garbage just because the volume of visitors. So some of those offsets, again, we're using visitor dollars to fund those offsets on our community assets as opposed to turning to taxpayers and we're needing to use taxpayer dollars to fund those things that are created by visitors. Our lifeguard program is partially funded by the local option tax lodging fees. Some of our invasive species funding, so that's where we're doing clear out of weeds around the marina. Marina visitors or our marina users contribute to that as well, but with visitors coming and going, cleaning out weeds at City Beach into Sand Creek. Our spot contract is funded under the local option tax as well. So with growth of dollars in the local option tax and lodging, and we have seen an uptick, as Sarah's mentioned in our treasure reports, it becomes an option that we could look to this as a source of funding for streets and sidewalks, then with visitors paying a proportionate share, perhaps their share of impacts on streets and sidewalks. And then finally, we approach our street projects as multifaceted projects, looking at leveraging opportunities where we have a street project that needs to get done, but we might also have a sewer line replacement or a water line replacement or an upgrade that's needing to happen. So that becomes part of our formula when we're prioritizing projects where we have those opportunities to do a street overlay and combine that with the utility project. Now we're able to leverage utility funds because utility funds can pay their proportionate share of the paving associated with the utility project, and then we don't have a cut that then becomes a future pothole. And then finally, it creates savings because we have a larger project. One thing for council to potentially consider moving forward is should perhaps we look at and put out to voters the option of visitors paying a larger share for, for streets. So currently, as a reminder to council, our local option tax that we have in place, and I'm talking about our lodging tax. So this is a tax that applies only to visitors, this is, it applies to occup, to occupancy and temporary lodging of thirty days or less. So it applies to our hotels, it applies to our motels, it applies to short-term rentals. And under our ordinance thirteen twelve, and with voter approval, we have a seven- we have a 7% local option tax. And the current local option tax that we have sunsets at the end of 2026. If there were any changes to it, it could go out to voters. Voters could approve changes in advance of 2026 with the start date to replace what we currently have. But what we currently have sunsets at the end of 2026. Our national average lodging, national average lodging tax, this is based on a 2019 lodging tax study that was conducted by the American Housing and Lodging Association. Across the country, the average is 13 and a half percent. They noted in their 2019 study that many jurisdictions across the country are increasing their tax and are now 20% or over. And they also note in the report that many jurisdictions are applying an additional flat fee. So they might have a percentage lodging tax, but with that, then an additional flat fee and that ranges on average between $1 and $5 a night. So a flat fee instead of a percentage might be on top of that. So that could be another option that council could potentially consider and put before voters.
Jennifer, can you speak to that? That seems like an interesting approach. I don't really see the advantage there, especially for such a small amount.
I think probably for consistency, so and messaging around that. So instead of having a percentage and it's going to be varying based on whatever you're paying for a room rate, many jurisdictions have gone to adding this additional fee of, so you stay overnight, it's $5 a night and that's going towards XYZ. There are some trends in voter support recently, particularly in our state for tourist lodging funds supporting streets. So in recently, most recently, just in primary elections down in Blaine County, for example, we saw Ketchum had put before voters a local option tax to support housing projects, which ultimately didn't get a super majority vote and pass. But the city of Bellevue down in Blaine County had put forth a bed tax to support streets and that had passed. McCall is another city that has a specific portion of their, of their tax dedicated towards streets. And so we're seeing a growing number of cities across the state implementing new local option tax, increasing local option tax, but particularly looking at local op, option tax for supporting infrastructure because they're in similar situations to what we are as well. And looking again at capturing tourist dollars as opposed to local dollars. So last year, council, recall, we had the initiative that council had approved to go before voters, got a majority vote, not a super majority for the local option tax. There was much discussion and feedback about number one, the concern about investments in streets and sidewalks and needing to have that investment. But then number two, much of the concern that we heard back from the community was the impact of a local option sales tax on the local community contributing more as well. So while it does leverage tourist dollars, it impacts our local community members as well, where arguably a lodging tax is those coming from out of the area and it may be family members, but it's people coming from out of the area staying as opposed to locals who live here. So we did want to put that before council as, as an option for discussion, not for decision tonight. We're not asking for any action, but as Amanda went through kind of a different funding strategy with projects and we'll see that next, we did look at, well, if we were to do an increase and just for placeholder, we looked at if we were to double our local option tax, what could that look like? So reminder to council right now, under local, our current projections, local option tax is coming in at about 750,000 a year specifically for hotel motel lodging tax. So if we were to do an increase, what could that look like for investments? So you'll see what Amanda has moving forward is looking at kind of a, potentially like a match scenario. If we were to do something with local option tax, we know we've been able to get local investment up to a half million dollars a year. What would it look like for us to be able to leverage a visitor investment that would match what that local investment is? Finally, before I hand it over to Amanda, one of the other things I would note relative to our ability to invest local dollars into streets as well as service needs as we continue to grow as a community. One of the challenges that we balance with our budget is our caps on, on property tax and limitations, most recent limitations that have been put down by the state legislature and ultimately passed and signed into law that puts caps where we can only take so much of new growth. So it really limits our ability to grow our local funding for our local government and community needs. But we do have coming in the horizon as we get out to 2029, we do have our urban renewal agency, the Sandpoint Urban Renewal Agency. We have two taxing districts that were created under urban renewal specifically to fund transportation projects. So we have our urban renewal north district. So that's kind of Baldi Road north city limits. When you think about it, it's kind of bounded by Baldi to the south and Boyer to the, to the east and then within our city limits there. And then we have downtown is another urban renewal district. And that was created specifically to fund the street improvements needed and our downtown revitalization projects. So ultimately, our Sandpoint Urban Renewal, as, as it currently exists, sunsets in 2029. So those dollars then would revert to tax increment to the city and out of urban renewal, which would give us another opportunity in 2029 with existing dollars without increasing taxes to make a larger investment in streets and other city services. But right now, that's specifically tied to those particular street projects. One thing I would note relative to downtown is we will be in design for downtown going into late this year, next year with construction the following year. So there are funds in our urban renewal dollars for downtown to fund downtown. As we've discussed with Great Northern, Great Northern's, Sir Urban Renewal Dollars is about half of the funding needed for rebuilding Great Northern. So even with that, we're going to have to leverage grant dollars. It's about half of a $16 million project.
Thank you.
I have a little bit more mystery.
Yeah, please.
So in taking all of the various funding strategies that Jennifer mentioned, if we were to apply all of them, so including the general fund as well as a local, assuming an increase in the tourist tax and additional grant dollars, including the urban renewal funds that Jennifer just mentioned, we have applied a forecast for the next five years. So the graphs in front of you represent this year's projection of actual costs as well as the next five years. On the left graph, it's similar to the one we just reviewed up above. We have in blue streets or the pavement side of things and then in the orange color pedestrian and bicycle investments. On the right graph, this represents all funding strategies again, as well as our major capital investments. So if we were to look at the right graph, the darker or the darkest color, I should say, represents the investment from general fund and funding mechanisms that are known or we have a high confidence level in such as the urban renewal that is unknown. We also have ARPA funding that is incorporated in that. We have that funding, so it's included in that darkest color there. Then the local option tax or the tourist tax is represented in that middle shade. And then future grants that are to be determined, meaning we're either actively applying for them or we know that we need to apply for them because the project far exceeds what we could afford on our own. So if we put all those dollars together, this is showing that the trend, as Jennifer mentioned, provides stability but also continues to increase over the years, which is consistent with our multimodal plan. The projects that are behind these two graphs, you will be able to dive into via the story by clicking on the link and really looking at all of those individually. I'm happy to just show you a glance of them this evening. So this is representing, this spreadsheet is representing, again, it's preliminary at this point, what we refer to as routine projects or those projects that are single year or under a million dollars. The green bar represents the pavement. On the first line, T1 projects are pavement. Thank you. My screen looks great. Okay, thank you very much. That green bar, the top row, the T1 is representing the pavement reconstruction and ceiling projects. I'm going to do the high level review first and then the T2 bar and everything under it is representing pedestrian priority network improvement. And what I mean by that is in our multimodal plan, we adopted a priority network system of sidewalks. So we said if we were to fill all of the gaps and have really a network of sidewalks that provided consistent connectivity throughout town, the implications that we would have that network be. These are our priorities. So our priority projects are those within that adopted network. And that list and the bars below it represents the various funding mechanisms. So as we discussed, general fund, impact fees, in-lu fees, potential tourist tax as well as ARPA funds and then other grant dollars for some of those additional projects. And then last but certainly not least, we have in our transportation plan, a bicycle priority network as well. And so investment dollars for bicycle pathways, striping, those sort of elements. And I did want to just note some of the key pavement projects because we get asked this question a lot by the public. The ones that I already mentioned this evening, doing the design for Ruth. We currently do not have sufficient funds in this fiscal year to actually complete the construction of Ruth Hickory and Jefferson. The reason Ruth Hickory and Jefferson rises to the top is because we have a water main replacement project in that area. And in addition, that was a project that was identified as needing to be replaced per our pavement condition report. So that's where we married those two project needs. However, we're representing that we can move forward with the Cedar Street design with the dollars that we have in this fiscal year in hopes of being able to actually fund that construction via a tourist tax. If that were to be something city council approved and voters approved ultimately, as well as getting designs done for First Street with our current dollars and being able to fund that First Street project with potential tourist tax dollars. First Street is between Forest and Ella. And then we also have a number of ceiling projects that are really important kind of before it gets to the edge where we can't replace it in a cost-effective manner. And that includes Baldi Mountain, Lincoln as well as Pine. So those are some of our key collectors and arterials throughout town that require ceiling as well. And then we have a placeholder for additional pavement assessment and projects in years three, four and five. So this schedule here is just trying to represent the investment, the total investment dollars in green per year. And then what project as well as the action that's occurring in that fiscal year, such as in year one, we might be doing survey and year two doing design or do design in one year and then construction the following. So just trying to give the public a sense of the timing of these projects. And that would be true as well for our pedestrian projects. Those projects listed under the tourist tax, which is the blue bar here, those are the same projects that we went out to voters with, with the previous lot. Those are projects that are identified within our pedestrian priority network and they are located throughout the city. They're not focused in just one portion of town. They were really spread out. And then ARPA funds, we currently have those funds, $200,000 allocated towards streets with a potential budget adoption for next fiscal year of getting the design completed to move forward that Superior Street pathway. That's been in multiple planning documents for many years, including the downtown streets and design guidelines. In 2013, there is a graphic in that and it was carried forward into our multimodal plan that's providing connectivity east of First Avenue along Superior. We have quite a bit of businesses going in there and that would provide that connectivity from the interpretive center and the additional pathways that run north and south into our downtown core. Other key grants that we're looking to pursue as we move forward are, I actually should back up and mention Pine Street. I apologize. Pine Street is an active project. Construction is currently underway. That is just over $500,000 and that is largely supported by grant dollars. And then we have the Division Avenue corridor improvement project. I'll be giving an update on that here in just a second, as well as the North Boyer Avenue multi-use pathway. That's a grant we've gone after multiple years in a row and we will continue to do so. That's filling the gaps on North Boyer Avenue on the east side for that multi-use path. And then a variety of bicycle projects that are listed there. We've invested this year already in improving the extension of Matty Lane on the north end of town to an existing city park. I'm providing a multi-use path there as well as key signage that was necessary to maintain safety as well as an access from the Schweitzer Roundabout up to Matty Lane to be able to access that park. And let's see if this switches. I hope, yes. So the other component that will be on the story for folks to click on and dive into is our schedule for those major projects. And I'm not going to go through each line item of these. They're projects we've spoken about previously in the multimodal plan as well as some of them this evening. Just have one additional update and then I'll open it up for questions. We do get questions from council as well as the public on a few projects that are, have a high profile, I will say. And that is Bridge Street. Bridge Street's been a project that we've invested in, in the past and we need additional investments in going forward. So every year, ITD inspects all of the bridges within the state of Idaho and they produce a inspection report. There was recently a grant provided, a grant opportunity, I should say, provided by the state and just wanted to clarify for city council that Bridge Street does not qualify for that grant application. We're not eligible because our structure doesn't qualify as a posted structure, which basically means it's not load restricted at this time and it's obviously not closed, thank goodness. However, we do have inspection report that recommends full replacement of that bridge, which is included in our multimodal plan. In the meantime, as is represented in the last spreadsheet that I shown you, I have shown you, we need to do some repairs that are identified in that inspection report until we're able to move forward with the full replacement. So we will continue to look for grant dollars to fund that project. And in the meantime, we will move forward with getting the design done for those repairs. Also, the child pedestrian safety grant, we received authorization by city council in December of 2021 to apply for the child pedestrian safety grant for the first phase of Division Avenue and providing that widening of the east side of the sidewalk and moving pedestrians onto a full width sidewalk as well as providing a buffer on the east side of Division from Superior almost to the highway. So we were not awarded that grant the first round. However, the state has allocated an additional $10 million again, and so we are able to apply. And that application is due June 8th, so we will reapply for the same grant. And we actually get additional points if we applied last time and didn't get the grant. So fingers crossed, but we will be moving forward with that. And then last but not least, just a quick update on the urban area transportation plan. We've brought this project forward previously to city council. It's essentially a federally funded project to do a regional assessment and plan. So it includes everything within the urban area as defined by the census. So that's Dover and Kootenay, Ponderay, the city of Sandpoint and portions of unincorporated Bonner County. We are moving forward with that urban area transportation plan. We meet on a monthly basis and we anticipate bringing draft goals and objectives forward to city council and the public. and we anticipate bringing draft goals and objectives forward to city council and the public later this summer. They're in the process of getting those drafted, and we intend to host a public engagement event at Crazy Days in July. So stay tuned for that information, as well as an online public survey. With that, I will open it up for any questions.
Great. Could you go back to the pie chart that was on your second slide, I believe? I'm just curious about the proportion. So subgrade and base pavements, but what I'm interested in is the proportion of general maintenance projects that came up in our, in our analysis report versus the replacement projects. There's a, is it 50/50 in terms of dollars, or is it, how are you allocating repair and maintenance based on that analysis report that we did from 2020 versus roads that just need complete reconstruction because they're not, they're failing?
I appreciate the question, and if I may, just make sure I understand it accurately. So you're really honing in on the sentence that I said. The city's approach for where to invest is a balance between maintaining that backlog and fixing the worst streets. So maintaining the backlog is fairly straightforward. We get to take a report and sort, and they make recommendations based upon a number from one to 100. So that piece is easy. Fixing the worst streets, that's where city council comes in. Staff hear a lot from the public, as do you, and we have a sense that we have a pretty good understanding of some of those key projects, such as Great Northern, such as Ontario, Cedar Street. The list does go on, but we certainly can't emphasize enough that the list is preliminary at this point. And as we continue to refine on an annual basis, what projects we're investing in, I think that's really where we need input on. I will say, and kind of echo Jennifer's statement, that when we're looking at this formula, it's not an exact science. However, one component that weighs heavily into the timing of a project is cost. So Cedar Street's been really challenging for us to tackle because it's well over a million dollars, we anticipate at this point, as is Great Northern. As Jennifer mentioned, we're looking at a $16 million project there. So while that might be a hot button for the public, we simply don't have that kind of funding at this time. And then the other element is us coupling these projects with the timing of water and sewer replacements. So we might have a really great need on a roadway, but we don't have a water or sewer design on that project, and that needs to happen first. Or we're just going to get pushed back that we just did a pavement project, and now there's trenches across it, right? So it's all of those factors that we're looking at into this formula. And I use the term formula loosely because it's not an exact science, but certainly welcome input.
Okay. I can appreciate, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate that last sentence. So I'm having like an overwhelmed concerned citizen moment here. So I'm trying to like take a deep breath because as, as we're hearing this, as I'm hearing this, it's whack-a-mole. Like, we've got roads, we've got water, we've got sewer, and it's in sidewalks and community prioritization, all of these different things. So, which is, the reality is, what we're doing is we're being told that things are broken, and it's going to be expensive. And we've got this beautiful, long spreadsheet that shows that these things have been identified and prioritized. We have intelligent people helping create formulas, and so what I'm getting at is as if our citizens are watching, great, they hear it. They hear that we're all doing our very, very best. And as citizens ask me these questions like, ah, here you go tearing up a road again, like, no, we're not. It's prioritized because we don't have a plan for this. However, we're working on a plan. This is a very important meeting that I hope that all of our citizens, if they have questions and concerns, they can accurately hear, and they can go to the stories and see. This is, this is very well laid out to tell us that things are broken, and it's going to be expensive, and we're coming up with as creative ways to fund them. And Jennifer, I think that you had made, this was an indirect term. I don't, you didn't make this up, but as I'm sitting here listening to this, visitor investment for community need. It's beautiful. That's, that's not, that, that, we do value our travel and tourism and our visitors. Absolutely. And we don't want to overtax our residents. So a good term is visitor investment for community need. Who doesn't want to help with that? So, well done.
Any other questions or comments, council? Thanks, Amanda.
I might say something about, I mean, tourism, the chamber handles all the tourism for the region, good or bad. But it really helps, has helped our businesses grow, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm in support of the bed tax, simply be, or the raising of the bed tax. One, because it is paid by visitors, and I know one of the concerns was, well, what if that is off-putting, and people don't come here anymore? In the 13 years I've been doing tourism, I've not seen a decrease in tourism at all. I mean, we are now telling people they have to book a year out, or they're not even going to get a campground. And so I think, you know, and the way the world is economically right now, I think people are freaking out a bit. But I, I agree with Andy. I like the visitor investment because they should have to put some into what they're taking advantage of. And, you know, not taxing our citizens, and, you know, if this is the way we decide to go, I really want to make sure that our local citizens understand that it's a visitor tax because, you know, we have people in the community that freak out when they hear the word tax. And so I just think we need to do a, you know, a great job of messaging and helping them understand what it is. But in my opinion, I don't, I don't see tourism slowing down ever. That's probably not the happiest thing to say, but it's good for my businesses, right? All the businesses that I advocate for, but those are just my two cents.
I think it's worth mentioning, too, that just a few years ago, at 7% bed tax, Sandpoint was the highest in the state. And clearly, that didn't have an impact on tourism in Sandpoint. So I'm comfortable with it as well. Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you, Amanda, for that presentation. Appreciate it. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this issue? Adam Clark?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Moving on, the final, final item on the agenda is a proposed construction contract award for the 2022 Great Northern Railroad Rehabilitation, Rehabilitation Project. Infrastructure and Development Services Director Amanda Wilson will once again provide a riveting presentation for us.
No pressure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We have one audience member left, so enthrall.
Fantastic. There are pictures, so that's good. So again, Great Northern Road, this is a 2022 pavement rehabilitation. This is not the major corridor improvement project that we have been talking about, but I do want to take just a moment to recap that project. The entire corridor is from Baldi Mountain all the way up to Woodlands, and that was identified as a need back in 2010, likely before 2010, but it was adopted and implemented through the 2010 amended Northern Urban Renewal Plan. And it specifically states that there is a significant public infrastructure improvement need to be critical for the effective enhancement of economic development and to help stimulate private development. The purpose of the project is to resolve existing roadway drainage and utility challenges along approximately 1.3 miles. I can't emphasize drainage enough. We see on the surface the pavement issue, but the, what's behind the scenes, what's behind the curtain is the drainage issue. And lack of drainage is really the crux of the concern there. The preliminary plan, city council approved, and we completed a preliminary engineering effort in fiscal year 21 that assessed, it further assessed from 2010, the existing conditions. It developed probable costs. That's where we got that 16, it's actually over 16 million, just shy of $17 million of investment for the total project cost in $2021, and determined the most viable solution. And then it assisted with us developing a phasing plan. This plan was included in the adoption of the multimodal plan in 2021. The top of the screen, there's a roadway section representing that this is, again, a full corridor replacement. So it provides for multi-use path, dedicated bike lanes for those bike commuters, as well as two 14-foot travel lanes. This is a primary truck route serving a industrial zone, so wider lanes are typical. That includes a shoulder, a buffer basically for bicyclists as well, and then significant investment in drainage. So that is by way of pipes, as well as a swale and surface treatment on the west side of Great Northern along the Great Northern Railway there, BNSF Railway, sorry. And then the alignment that was proposed also provides two shifts in the alignment. On the left-hand side of that lower image is Baldi Mountain, and on the right side, Woodland. The intent is to realign Great Northern through what is currently the county and IHD lot to square that intersection up and improve the safety at that current intersection is on a curve. And then when we get to Gooby, same, realign Great Northern further to the east in this case to provide a more true T-intersection to improve safety at that location and provide opportunity for drainage to pass through there as well. That's the project in a nutshell. And as I mentioned earlier, about a $17 million project that does include water and sewer dollars and improvements in that area, as well as the phasing plan is there before you with the anticipation of construction starting for water and sewer in 2024. However, tonight, we're here to talk about the current critical issues. So the portion of road that we're requesting a construction contract award is just north of Gooby, north of the tracks, and it goes approximately 1,300 linear feet to the north, just shy of Quest, and it would be the full width replacement. On the right-hand side are some photos of the current conditions. I can certainly speak for our, I think, entire streets crew, as well as many, many other city staff that it's, the current conditions are embarrassing. We very much are hopeful we can move this project forward and provide a drivable surface. They are simply beyond repair without a more significant effort. And what I mean by that is, the photos, as you can tell here, we can't simply just go and patch them. A patch isn't going to hold, and it's really critical that we invest enough to buy us time until that roadway can properly be placed. So we need to get through a few more winters. It is temporary in nature because the root of the problem, as I mentioned earlier, is drainage, and we're not fixing the drainage problem with this. We're simply fixing or requesting to fix the asphalt. That means, again, full width replacement, the intense to pulverize the existing material that's there, leave it in place, add additional new base, which is aggregate rock, as well as four inches of new asphalt. The proposal, I'm sorry, the bids that were solicited was via the semi-formal bid process. So we solicited three bids, two responded, one denied. And the lowest responsive, responsible bidder is Woods Crushing and Holling Incorporated for a total lump sum of $141,335. We've allowed for a five-day consecutive day, sorry, a five-day consecutive closure and detour of the roadway to accommodate the work. It's simply not safe to accommodate traffic through that zone, given the current conditions, while construction's underway. And we have some pretty good detour routes in place. The contract completion would be July 15th, 2022. However, given the current conditions, we've included an early completion bonus, $5,000 should they get the work done by June 17th. I did have a conversation with them today, and they too are embarrassed by the condition of the road and very, very much want to get it fixed. The variable there is the milling machine that comes in and actually grinds up the material that's in. So they are doing everything they can to meet that June 17th date. But we will certainly notify the public. Once we have a confirmed date, should council decide to award this contract, and we'll keep you posted on the completion and detours.
Couple of questions, Amanda. One, how did you pick the June 17th early completion date? What's the relevance of that?
The relevance is it seems like the earliest, most reasonable date that it could be a call.
I would also point out that that's Schweitzer opening weekend, and there will be a lot of traffic going up that road.
Well, hopefully it'll be done by then, should you decide to award the contract, so.
And after that, Schweitzer will be open daily. So that's a heavily used route for Schweitzer traffic. So it'd be good to get it done by then and not have to close it. I'm just pointing out as a Schweitzer.
Exactly. I would love to give them a deadline of this Friday or the end of next week. The sooner the better. I just, it's just not reasonable.
Okay, but they're ready to get right on it.
They're ready to what?
They're, they're getting right on it. They're ready to just.
Should we award this construction contract?
Another question. So what happens with this section of road with the future reroute?
To be determined. We need to negotiate that final alignment with the existing property owners in that area. So significant portion of this project is right-of-way acquisition and negotiations, and we anticipate that's going to take us two to three years, not only with private property owners, but as well as the railroad. At this location, the ideal plan would be to remove the road at this section, and the current property owner to the east of it would receive that land in exchange for the portion that they would be giving us on the east side of their property. It sounds simple, but negotiations are not always simple. And then to the west of the current alignment is an opportunity for stormwater retention and treatment before it would potentially outfall further to the west into Chuck Sloot.
Okay, and it, it seems that, has there been any preliminary conversation with any of those stakeholders? Property owners? Okay. And they, they seem amenable to have further discussion, at least?
At least talk, yes.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say I enjoyed the pictures. I was a little disappointed you didn't give us one with the hole in the road cone half enveloped in the hole, but maybe next time we'll get to enjoy them.
I had a hard time including photos at all, to be quite honest. They're so bad.
Well, thank you for that. And those photos are an example of you, as embarrassed as you and others might be, this is an example of due diligence that is going to pivot off of priority and not ignored. So it, hear me correctly, to our citizens, we are not going, we're going to choose not to ignore things just because they are prioritized. We will, we will do our very best to not ignore, as well as stick to our prioritized list. So don't be embarrassed.
Thank you.
I just have one final thing. I mean, it does not seem like Great Northern, in my memory, that whole section was repaved not that long ago. And it obviously is a subsurface drainage issue because I think that road was, that effort was taken out much more rapidly than other areas in town. But, because I remember my kids being excited about riding their skateboards and their bikes, and everybody was on Great Northern for a while, and then I'm like, wow, this really fell apart rapidly. So it's, yeah, it, a longer-term project is definitely needed, or we're just going to keep wasting our resources.
Yeah, it's, it's a road through a swamp.
Wait, and it was constructed with, we stretched our dollars as far as we could at that time, which I really commend us for doing back in the day, but it wasn't designed for the loads that it receives today. It wasn't designed for the drainage. It wasn't designed for pedestrians and bicycles. It was, let's get some asphalt on this dirt road.
Yeah. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this issue, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda, for that presentation. All right, council, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution for the 2022 Great Northern Road Rehabilitation Project Construction Contract Award. Is there a motion?
We're moved.
Second.
They moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? To be your own call vote?
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Grove?
Yes.
Motion passes, and this meeting is adjourned.